Yeah, we called the meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Citizens to be heard. We'll hear it with Craig later on. Next thing we go through is the minutes for the chamber, fifth and chamber's call meeting. Review them and most approve.
Most approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion second to approval of the minutes for January 5th and January 12th. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay. Motion passed. Payment of bills.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay, we'll move right on to the feedlot officer report and performance credit report. Craig Holversen.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Any questions or you're just gonna sign it and I'm leaving? This is just basically a report that just you fill out for the PCA that what you've done throughout the year for the program along with the work plan that was earlier assigned by you guys and thank you.
Okay, it looks like you had eighty-one feedlots that you do?
Nope, one-hundred and five.
One-hundred and five, excuse me, one-hundred and five, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Do you see a benefit in doing this?
Pardon?
Is there a benefit for Clay County residents when you do these things?
Absolutely. You wanna keep the water clean.
Okay.
Yep.
I mean, is there buffer strips involved too in these feedlots, aren't there?
There can be if it need be, but there's some that you go there and they're in compliance. Others that have to have some tweaking done, you know, it could be a grass buffer strip, diversion of some sort. Sometimes it just takes, if it comes off of a hillside, you divert that water from coming through the feedlot. Cause there's a program you can, the PCA or University of Minnesota put together that is called Min Farm and you can fill out that to see whether they're in compliance or not. It helps you.
Do you find many that aren't in compliance or?
Oh, we've had, we've had a number, yep.
So are they penalized or do they just have to fix the problem?
They need to fix it, yep. You give them, you give them some time and they'll always stretch it, the time.
Okay.
So then you just keep after them. Cause I don't know if we really wanna go to the last resort of truly getting PCA involved if they'll work with me even if it's delayed a little bit.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just a brief history on that. It wasn't too many years ago, we had some real issues and controversies regarding a few feedlots and proposed feedlots. And part of the concern amongst even the feedlot owners themselves with MPCA was not, and they even self admittedly did not come out and do the inspections that they were supposed to be doing because they were understaffed. And that's when we then entered into a contract with Soil and Water to do it on our own through the cooperation of MPCA. You know, but that, that's just a little brief background and I don't think that we would ever wanna move away from, from this, what we're doing now. I think it's, I haven't, we haven't had one thunderstorm of issues that have come up, Craig, since you started doing it that I know of that's come before the board, so.
I guess that was my question at the beginning. I mean, sometimes we feel like, oh, we're inspecting these people and stuff like that, but there is a benefit to Clay County residents.
Oh, absolutely.
So that's, that's why we're doing this, you know?
Yep.
That's what I wanted to bring out, that we're not doing this to penalize anybody or aggravate anybody, it's for the benefit of Clay County residents.
Well, it is and it's makes sense for the clean water, but, but even, even the majority of the feedlot owners themselves appreciate the fact that, that they're being looked at to make sure that they're keeping up to code, so.
And you, and they work with you.
Yeah, that's right.
Glad to hear that.
Well, they work with you.
Yeah, well, yeah, they work with me then.
You need a motion to approve this or just?
And, and a signature, please.
I'll make motion to approve the report as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. All right. Good work. Thank you for your work.
Thank you guys. Did I take that today?
Do you want you to sign?
Have we got something to sign?
Sure.
We can have this one if nothing else.
We may, I don't know if we can.
Pardon?
We may, I don't know if we can.
Oh, which one? Which one in the front?
Right near the top.
Top.
Cause that needs to go on to scan that, put it on the county website and then Scott in Detroit Lakes will look at it and then they can make payment.
Do you just need one copy of that?
Just, just one will do, yep.
Thanks, Craig.
Appreciate it, everybody.
Nice to meet you.
Mr. Chair, if we can have you sign another one for our records before you leave, before you have it.
Okay, very good. All right, Dave. Have to approve some contracts for the humanist paving project?
Yeah, this is on our County Road Three project that was right outside our courthouse here. Took a little while to get it back from the contractor. I'm not exactly sure the reason to, but I originally signed it, I think it was in April and sent it to them. They signed it in June and then we finally got it back a week or two ago, so as you can see in my packet, the original contract was for nine-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-seven-thirty-two-sixty-one. This contract was with Mindac Asphalt at Thief River Falls. The final number to be approved is one-million-eighty-four-thousand-four-hundred-eighty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. You can see it's a little higher than we originally bid due to two things. The city wanted turn lane on First Avenue North and I think it was a really good idea, so we worked with them, we designed that and then constructed it. And then they also kinda had an idea that it's a good idea, but after the fact, they decided to change all the manhole grates and casting, so that was another thirty-three-thousand. So the actual contract actually underran with those two additions and it's about a hundred thousand over and there's a hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars there. There was a little bit of density incentives, you know, these type of paving projects, there's incentives and disincentives depending on how the compaction goes and that sort of thing and they didn't achieve any incentives, they actually kinda got penalized on those a little bit too and I think there was close to fifteen-thousand dollars in disincentives as well, so it doesn't mean the project is bad by any means, it just didn't mean they, they didn't go above and beyond the spec and that's just, we talked about this probably seven, eight years ago when the, when the ride incentive and the density incentives first came out with the asphalt paving and some counties weren't going with it, but I believe all counties are going with the ride and the, and the compaction incentives, it's kind of a standard thing now and it's a mind dot spec, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I, I do wanna point out that the city did cost share those, those overrides.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it was essentially it was a sixty-forty split on the entire job, so, so they picked up their, their share as well.
Good deal. I'll move to approve the request.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay, motion passed.
One thing to note too, I know the project kinda got finished a little later than we wanted. We did penalize them, liquidated damages accordingly and I think it was like forty-five-hundred dollars there too, so they did get nicked a little bit because we'd like them to be done before school started last year and they didn't get that done, so.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay. Next authorized to engage consultant services to explore facilities for the correctional facility funding. Mr. Burr.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the county board. What this is referenced to is, maybe I'll just go back a little bit further, the, the county board has indicated strong support for the building of a new jail. And what you've done up to this point is you authorized using eighty percent of the wind energy tax to help fund it. You've authorized an additional fifty-thousand dollars a year added to the levy up until now to help fund this jail project. And then you're also working on a finance committee that is coordinating when our other debt is maturing that you will add debt for this project. In other words, one debt will replace the other is so that you don't affect the levy a great deal. However, your efforts in that are gonna fall short of meeting the needs of funding a jail project and what will happen because you, now you haven't officially approved the, the contracts for the jail, but you have approved spending a lot of dollars towards it already and we're working towards a final design and, and final approval of building the jail. We are going to, or you've approved legislation to go to the state legislature to ask for some funding to help finance this county jail. I don't think our committee is, you know, we're hopeful, we're hopeful and we'll certainly make every effort that we can, but there are other avenues to pursue in regards to looking at all of this and we feel we need to be in a position to, to respond to all of the opportunities out there in funding a jail. And we, we do hold our hope for the state legislature and we don't wanna give up on that. We, although I think you all are aware the governor's budget came out on bonding and, and no jail projects are in the governor's budget, so we'll keep pursuing the legislative process and the bonding committees and our local representative, representation to seek funding, but we need to, we need to position ourselves to look at all options for funding. And I'm trying to stay away from what the options are because we don't know all of them right now and the details of it. But the finance committee did engage in conversation with Moria Lanning Consulting and we feel that in order to explore all options and look at all the, the options there are to fund this jail versus going on the backs of the, of the property tax, we need to employ or we would like to ask this board to employ the services of Moria Lanning Consulting to explore those. He's very versed in what goes on in the legislature and if we go for some wordage in regards to it, that, that he would be proficient in the, the wordage of it, the timing of when we put things together and, and we just need to be accurate on those things and we just feel that he could help us with that. I did contact him by email last week and he said that for his services, he said he expects to, to utilize maybe five to ten full days of, of time and he said his charges are a thousand dollars a day and he said it may take several days to compile a full day. In other words, about a hundred dollars an hour is what we're looking at and he feels that no more than five to ten full days, so that's five thousand to ten thousand dollars probably then plus some expenses of mileage and meals and things if, if that were to be needed, if he was to need to go down to the cities. So I guess I certainly wanna engage in some dialogue here and answer any questions that you have, but what the request is that this board authorize, working with Moria Lanning Consulting, on looking at the various options to fund this jail and probably a, a contract not to exceed ten thousand dollars at this time and we could come back if there was any need later on. Mr. Chair.
I don't think you could find a better person than Mr. Lanning to do this. He's, I've known him since junior high, he's a man of high integrity and he would do everything he can for us and whatever we pay him, he would be well worth and certainly have my support to start with ten thousand dollars or more so if you thought that were necessary.
I guess my thought would be we got a thirty, forty million dollar project or whatever, it's twenty minute, thirty, forty, you know, we definitely need some expertise in this and trying to get some funding, so that would be my thought on this.
Well, I, I guess I agree. I think it'd probably be money well spent and, you know, it sounds like a bargain compared to what we were talking about with, you know, the person from the metro area and doing some lobbying for us, so, you know, I think Mr. Lanning has the experience and knowledge of how to maneuver some of these things through St. Paul and I think it'd be very helpful for us, so I would support hiring him too.
Working on the finance committee, there, there, there aren't a lot of options to pay for a jail. And one of those options requires going to our citizens and asking them through a referendum process and it's no secret, we've talked about that some before and before we as a county board can even do that, we need to understand all the legalities that are required by the state legislature to do something like that and to get all the right answers so that when we do take it to the public, we can take it to the public with the understanding and knowledge that what we're giving them is, is everything true and accurate. And, you know, Mr. Lanning has been involved with those types of issues at the state legislature during his legislative career and in speaking with him, I, I agree with Commissioner Ingersoll that he, he would come highly, with a high degree of confidence in, in getting what we need and believe me, when we did meet with him, we have many questions, we have many questions that we don't have the answers to and we need to have those answers in order to properly engage the public in whatever form we end up taking to fund this, this jail because the other option is property tax and I don't know that there's a lot, whole lot of interest in seeing skyrocketing property taxes, so.
You mentioned ten thousand dollars, that sounds like a bare minimum, five to ten days. Would this board be willing to maybe increase that so Brian doesn't have to come back to us just in case he goes over that or Brian, are you satisfied with that amount to you?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Ingersoll, I think that's a good start and he seemed to be very comfortable with that and we need to keep you updated on this.
And you need more news, come back.
We'd come back and certainly ask if that's what you'd like.
Mr. Chair, I will concur with the rest of the board on the high integrity of Mr. Lanning and his firm. My question comes though, did we investigate other consultation firms in looking at this? I know when we hired a lobbyist, we just kinda went with the one that was recommended by another county and I'm just concerned that if we didn't investigate a few more that we know exactly what we're paying and.
Mr. Chair and Mr. Mojo, we, we did not. We, we did discuss who can we get to assist us with this, but we really didn't reach out to any consulting firms because we were kind of at a loss if where we were gonna go and we were kinda looking for backgrounds on it. We did talk about, or I can't remember if we did in committee, I know I did with, with the city of Morehead, Gavin Goodall, they do some work down there as well, but we just, when we discussed Moria Lanning, we just kinda really didn't go too much further because we thought he really understood the legislative process and, and had a lot of local integrity and things, so. And not to, not to say ten thousand dollars isn't a lot of money, but when you get in that consulting arena, you don't get a, you know, that's not a high price tag and, and he's just, was just, after meeting with him, he was so willing just to see what our needs were and work through it that we, we didn't go any further than checking it out.
Okay, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, you looking for a motion for ten thousand dollars?
I would like so moved.
I'll second that motion. It's up to ten thousand.
This time.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We want the committee reports. Jenny, you wanna start us out?
Sure. Just a moment, please. Last week, the Food Systems Advisory Commission met, we re, or we went over the urban chicken blueprint that we're proposing for the area to clear up any questions that there may be in the area.
The urban chicken.
Yep, if I can, if I can maybe go back a little bit, part of what this commission is doing is we're reviewing urban agriculture issues that may or may not be happening in our area. We're coming up as a group legislative bodies and coming up with blueprints for our, each of our jurisdictions to use if we were to adopt ordinances to allow these things, so.
Excuse me, which committee is this?
This is the Cast Clay Food Systems Advisory.
Oh, the food, okay, great, thank you.
You should change it to the urban chicken, that sounds better. It's better.
Right, the urban chicken, that's the one that everyone seems, seems to grasp a hold of, but we are reviewing a large amount of blueprints, that being one. Also, Adam Altenberg from MetroCog met with the area planners, which is something that we had encouraged them to do because it's important for us to hear what these planners are hearing, questions from citizens, then we can also move forward to see what the needs are. Excuse me. I had diversion land management also that day, but they changed the, the meeting, so I did show up for the finance committee and it sounds like everything's going well there. They are working on the budget that I think now has been approved by five of the six entities. The next day I had Soil, Soil and Water where we elected board members, Chair Kravenoch was elected again to serve in that capacity.
I thought he was, wasn't he resigning from?
That, no, he's not resigning from that, he's staying on that board. He was elected to the state board, so what he will do now is step down from the planning commission, he's a representative to the planning commission for the soil and water and he will no longer do that just because of time commitments and Randy Schleck will be on the planning commission for the SWCD. The next day I had Lakes and Prairies, we met to discuss facilities needs and reviewed eleven contractors, architects that had applied for the RFP and we will have interviews with four of those architects next week. That concludes my reports.
Okay, great.
Let's see, had Regional Radio Board and, and a lengthy discussion about the eight-hundred megahertz system that Minnesota has migrated to and that we're in the process here in Clay County and the discussion was North Dakota is looking at a similar system sometime in the not-too-distant future and so they're going to be utilizing some of Minnesota's equipment and, and when their process is done, there'll be some sharing and it actually was pretty promising, so for the future of emergency radio communications and so, at least for our area, probably in the next few years hopefully, so. Let's see, I had Beyond the Yellow Ribbon and discussion of, you know, some of the fundraisers and things they have planned this year for veterans and had an update from the Veteran Service Officer Kurt Cannon on the things they're doing in their office and I think a lot of positive things going on. I know Kurt said he had placed his first homeless veteran in an apartment here in Morehead recently and his assistant Jennifer had placed a veteran and his family, a homeless family into an apartment recently and a lot of good things like that going on with Beyond the Yellow Ribbon and the Veteran Service Office. I had a Heartland Trail meeting on Friday and that's, like I've always said, the diversion looks like a cakewalk compared to the Heartland Trail from what I can tell, but a lot of struggles with the, with the Heartland Trail and, and funding and we, we received some bonding money a year before last to, you know, to move our project forward and as did Becker County and Detroit Lakes who we partnered with and it turns out because of problems with the railroad that their section between Detroit Lakes and Fraser is gonna be a lot more expensive than they had anticipated, so they're submitting for more bonding money and we're gonna try and piggyback on that and MetroCog was there who's working on it on our behalf and hopefully in the next few months, there'll be some things getting started on, on pre-design for our section of the trail, so that was it for me.
Wayne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had one this week, Friday, January fifteenth, for children's mental health, early childhood initiative meeting, general business, and then we found out in Clay County, there are about one-hundred-and-fifty children in foster care at any given time and more young children are in mental health care management and more mental health care needs are being seen at a younger age now than in the past. And coming up on January twenty-fifth, our three local legislators will be here to hear from several entities relating to children's mental health and other concerns. There is much discussion as to what to present to these three when they do show up on the twenty-fifth and that concludes my report.
Wayne, what time is that?
I don't have that written down, I will get, I will find out and get it back to you again.
Thank you.
I might as well wear two.
Thank you.
Okay.
On January twelfth, we had a solid waste committee meeting with staff and part of the discussion is, is we're looking at going from a volume-based to a weight-based fee structure within solid waste and in doing that, there is an awful lot of work to be done. There's so many different types of, there's so many different categories that need to be done and we need, they're making some recommendations on what, what the rate should be and we wanted to, we sent it back to them, asking them to show the difference once it's switched from one to the other based on a per-ton price versus the volume-based. And so there's, they're in the process of doing that. And they, they, it was a good start, but it's, and overall, I think it makes sense now that we have a scale at the, at the landfill, it just makes sense that we try to get to a weight-based form of doing this. It might require some changes amongst the haulers, but we'll work with that. Then on the thirteenth, we had a diversion public outreach. Then on the 13th, we had a diversion public outreach meeting and at that meeting, we've come up with a handout and I'm going to give this to Vicki to make copies for all of you. One of them is kind of a recap of a lot of the mitigation efforts that we have ongoing and that we have tried to do. A lot of it has to do with the area south, where the controversy is in the story, staging storage area, so I will have Vicki provide that to you. In addition, there is a letter here from the Diversion Authority Chairman Derivaniel regarding the diversion authority goals for 2016, so I will also have Vicki provide that to you guys and you can read it and if you have questions...
That was emailed to us.
Was it emailed? Did you all get that?
Brian forwarded the diversion goals. I don't know.
Oh, okay. Okay, I didn't know if you all got it.
Right, but I know...
Okay, well, I'll give it to Vicki and if she hasn't, then she can, she can email to you. And then we had updates on the e-newsletter and the comment, different types of comments that are going on there. Also, at the outreach meeting, we gave updates on different meetings that are taking place. They've had their meeting with Stanley Township and the city of Horse, so all those things are constantly ongoing. I know there's efforts to form a cemetery mitigation team. I think that's what, you'll find that in the goals when you hear about some of those things, so. And then, then the next day was the actual diversion authority meeting and one of the things that we did hear about was the North Dakota retention projects. We got an update on North Dakota retention projects that are happening. There was a little bit of Minnesota in there as well, but to be honest with you, there's actually more retention projects happening on the Minnesota side of the river right now than there on the North Dakota side. They did talk about some site options, you know, and I think originally they said they would take 93 sites to fully handle what this retention area that we're looking at staging area would be and, and so far, I think they were talking about three or four sites.
The start.
Yeah, it's a start, but, and, and they also said that those ones that they're looking at, they have a timeframe just in the study of approximately three years, just to study them, so it's, it's a long process, but it's something that we still want to do. I, I want to congratulate the Buffalo Red Board for actually submitting some projects to the diversion authority for funding assistance, you know, the diversion authority, et cetera, set aside 25 million for that purpose and the one watershed who's really stepped up so far has been our own watershed here in Clay County, so that's been a good thing. Another, another big issue that happened was we did, we did agree to that Ashurst legal letter of engagement, their law firm out of New York, and you might ask why we, why we did that and the purpose of that is, it's to define and to help write the PP Project Partnership, the P3 project, that is a federal project that requires an awful lot of knowledge and this, Ashurst has done this worldwide in these types of projects and we felt that, and even through a lot of local legal firms, discussions were that that just required something a little bit more, so this Ashurst has been, and the original contract that we did with them, I think it was $100,000 just to get started, but again, you're talking about, you know, a billion-dollar project that, and this part of the project is everything, basically the whole 36-mile-long diversion itself would be...
Channel.
Yeah, the channel is what the P3 would do and so to, to do that and then there has to be designed, there has to be some leeway in there for them, for example, as it's moving along, can they make changes to a bridge, then one of the many bridge, you know, there's going to be many bridges that would cross that channel, so there's just a lot there and so, so, you know, obviously that comes with controversy when you get somebody out there, but, and given the legal community, I saw a local lawyer talking about it on television program the other night and he even said that it was probably a good thing to have this outfit do this, so. Then we heard from the Business Leaders Task Force and they continue to strongly support the project and that's pretty much all that. Yeah, that's it.
Well, thank you, very good report on that diversion. Thank you very much. I had the Wild Rice watershed on Wednesday. It's amazing, every time I seem to get on a committee here, they start going through their rules and stuff, you know, they brought out about a 30, 40-page thing, they're going, we're going to update our rules, you know, so, but that's their task force for next meeting, it's going to go through the rules update. Another interesting thing they had, they were using a drone to inspect the ditches. They hired Houston Engineering, I think, to use a drone and normally your ditch is running along the highway, the county roads or something like that, that you can inspect them pretty well, but they did have one ditch that sort of meandered through the, through the stuff where they couldn't drive by and they used a drone and he gave a video how that, how they did inspection and it was a very good thing, you know, so, but question comes up, the cost of it and stuff like that, so they want to keep doing that, but there's an interesting video they had there. Then I was also at the Heartland Trail meeting on Friday. I think they're, they've been reduced by about 20% their funding too, wasn't it, they didn't get all the funding they wanted, wasn't there a 20% reduction or something?
Well, the original bond money was...
Reduced by?
Yeah, by, I think it was, yeah, 15 or 20%.
Also, they were, they were discussing, you know, I mean, we broke down that project like from Morehead to Buffalo River, I mean Buffalo Park and then Buffalo Park to all like, but they were even thinking, probably should even go to shorter ones yet, you know, because, you know, if you take the whole thing, that looks to be like, it's not going to work out that great, you know, so, but probably take short projects, do it even a little bit shorter, you know, and they're, they're looking at that now and also they want to give up a resolution that, that Clay County Commission, that we support their funding for, they want to get some funding for individual shorter projects and they want our support for that, so they're going to get up a resolution and bring that forward for us to look at. Okay, this is what I had Brian, did you have?
Well, yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Just an update, Dave Overbow and Matt Cero and myself met again to finalize or to establish, I should say, we're not in the finalizing stage yet, but some questions for the interviews next Tuesday and Vicki helped us refine some of the wordage and things with it as well, so we've got kind of a tentative format for the interviews yet, so if there's something that you would like us to include in that, please don't hesitate to contact us. It just, it's, I've got it pretty well drafted out and we'll certainly give it to you next Tuesday, unless you have questions about before, stop in or give me a holler and I can get that out to you. We also have a list of all five of the, of the firms that you'll be interviewing and as I stated, I think, last week, they start at 11:00, we have them at 11:00 o'clock and then we'll break for lunch and have lunch brought and we'll have a 12:30, 1:30, 2:30, 3:30, so if you want to plan your afternoon accordingly, we have those set up, so if there's any questions on that, just don't hesitate to holler on that. I attended the solid waste staff meeting with, that Commissioner Campbell had talked about and, and I don't know that there's anything more to add there, I think he covered it very well. I had some personnel evaluations, I had a meeting over at the Law Enforcement Center with the police department and with our maintenance or custodial staff supervisor so that we can coordinate some cleaning. We've had staff turnover there and, and some concerns with the timing of cleaning and things. If you've seen the ad come out, I think it came out this weekend for an earlier morning person there and we've looked at the possibilities of a cleaning service or whatever to meet those needs. It's kind of tough to find someone to come in at 4:00 in the morning to clean from 4:00 to 8:00 in the morning and, and when they're running a 24-hour operation, they need that cleaned at the end of the shift prior to the, the day staff coming on, so it creates a little extra stress on everything, I guess. Land management meeting of the diversion, attended that on Wednesday afternoon and the only probably significant thing there and, and they are pushing forward with some purchasing of land on the North Dakota side, getting a rates of entry because they need to start looking at, the core hopes to get dollars in the, in the president's budget for core operations and what they need then is to start looking at the, the high-hazard dam area that they will be building a foundation to, to build that on and they need land and accessibility to get to those things, so that was kind of the, the big issue that was talked about there, so going forward with, with that step.
Isn't it the land for the inlet?
The inlet areas, yeah, that's part of the high hazard, yeah. The inlet is the big, big issue because that'll be the big cost factor in it, so, and that's on the North Dakota side, so, yeah. Yeah, and I think it was addressed at the, at the Board of Authority as well. I attended that as well and the...
But it's, it's the North Dakota entities that are going to purchase that land, not, not the diversion authority, not at this point. Diversion authority isn't going to do it at this point. It's going to be a North Dakota entity.
It's going to be the southeast...
Southeast Gas.
Yeah, they've been doing all of the land purchases and funded by the diversion authority, I shouldn't say by the diversion authority, funded by the North Dakota entities through the sales tax and things, so. And then Friday morning, we had a discussion with a, with a Morehead resident that is in the broadband business. I know Commissioner Wayland had given me a sheet to show what very poor coverage we have in the, for Clay County on broadband service and this company is engaged in wireless broadband service, so Mark Sloan and, and Tim Dent and Dave Overbow and myself met with this individual to talk about the possibilities of, of wireless broadband for Clay County and I think the, the person was more interested to see what Clay County had available in regards to our needs, but we were more interested in looking at coverage for the county because I think the state legislature is going to talk about broadband service to rural Minnesota this year and possibly some funding and rather than going out and running underground cable for these inner internet services, wireless seems like it would be a good option for Clay County because it's so flat and what they need is line of sight from tower to tower and, you know, with the, with the 800 megahertz, we maybe have some towers that would be freed up too, so we're looking at that a little bit because, and I don't know how far you guys want us to push that and I know you don't want necessarily county money invested in that, but if the state does come along, we thought it would be wise of us to be in a position to maybe react to that if, if that comes to be, so. The, this week, I don't know if any of you plan to go up to it, but the Red River Basin Conference is at Grand Forks this week. I've attended several of those, but just time just doesn't allow it this week, so I will not be going up myself.
I have it on my calendar to try to go Thursday, but I got other conflict.
I think it goes just till noon on Thursday, I think, then it's done.
Yeah, it's the morning session on Thursday.
Yeah, morning session, yeah. All day Wednesday.
We have solid waste at eight, so I gotta...
Yeah, I know, that's, it was just a tough week. And then, of course, Friday, we have the Joint Powers Retreat and I think Vicki, all are registered for that, so you are all registered for that. And then this afternoon, we have the mental health jail study and we will be going over some of those designs that have been taken place in the last couple of weeks for that as well, so. Mr. Chair?
I had a comment for Brian here. I know that there's some draft work being done on a potential or what will be a future JPA...
Oh, yes.
Through, through the diversion authority and the cities of Fargo and Morehead and I, I just hope that before the fact and not after the fact, that we can have our own county legal counsel be taking a look at that to make sure that any financial obligations on the part of the city or Clay County is not and that it's, like, like we've always stated, will be the state of Minnesota, will have, will have to take care of any financial issues on that moving forward, so. I mentioned it just briefly to Steve this morning and he said he hadn't heard anything about it, but I, I know there's some draft work going on and I just would hope that they will, and I don't, our county attorney's office has not been involved in that drafting and I just think they should be.
Why are we not on, on that board? Why, why is Clay County not in discussion in that committee?
In the committee? What do you mean?
Well, I mean, they're drafting this JPA, why, why are we not part of that?
Well, somebody has to draft it.
Right, but what I'm saying is Morehead has a couple of representatives, why does Clay County not have someone on that?
I don't, I don't, I don't know that they even have a couple of representatives. Brian, do you want to talk about?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may on that, the two original sponsors of the diversion authority were, are, still are, Fargo and Morehead. They are the sponsors and then the diversion authority as a whole was added, so there's really now three sponsors, Morehead, Fargo, and then the diversion. And what this is, is a renewed JPA between the cities of Fargo, Morehead, and then the diversion as a whole, so really, I think Clay County has taken its position that we have been kind of supportive of Morehead as Morehead being the primary sponsor and frankly, it was discussed in, in the administrative advisory meeting about this should go to the full board pretty soon and what the explanation was given is that the attorneys are working with some representatives from Fargo and from Morehead. They have appointed a couple of people to work on and try and get all the fine details out and have those two entities quite satisfied with it before it advances to everybody else because they are the primary sponsors, they are the ones to, to, so I'm sure they'll come to Clay County for legal review in a timely fashion, but to...
And that's exactly why I've requested that we make sure that our legal counsel sees it.
Yeah.
Someone had just approached me because Morehead did have two people on that committee. Why?
I didn't even know how that committee was established.
I just, the only reason I asked is because you're on the diversion board.
Yeah, but it was never, that committee was never formed through the diversion authority board.
That's fine, thank you.
Just one comment on the broadband. I noticed that the MRCC meeting we had in St. Cloud, they were talking about that broadband and they felt that some of the counties people weren't moving into, they didn't have, like a lot of people, say a lot of, not a lot of people, people are starting to work from their homes now.
Correct.
You know, and if there's no broadband, they may not be moving into the county where there is no area, so it is an important item that we sort of get covered for.
That's where I got that map and gave it to Brian from, you know, to show us how, what a lack there is even in Clay County, it was pretty amazing, so.
Those that do have that, it's a very big advantage and so I think if, as we continue to want to encourage new business starts in our area, it's something that'll come down to service and it's an advantage.
Yep. Vicki, you have anything or Steve?
No.
Or your turn?